Two nineteen.
Motion approved.
I have a motion approved, I have a second.
Second.
Anything on that? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of approval of minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Minutes approved. And a fine job they were, first time out.
Thank you.
Seven oh one, we have an A&R plan, six hundred Nickel Street. Susan Colton applicant, John Glossa is speaking on behalf of the A&R plan. Should have a plan in our packet, a small locus. All right, John, why don't you fill us in on what we're doing up here?
Okay, so I think you probably know this is actually was Abe Shigori's house, so at the end of Nickel Street, St. Timothy's Church is right here. And maybe five years or so ago, Abe cut off this lot and sold it to Majid. And this is his remaining, or now it's his daughter Susan Shigori Colton. This is the remaining parcel, so Susan asked me, you know, if we could subdivide this with an A&R, you know, not a subdivision. And so this is what we came up with. I've presented this plan informally to Mark Schubert, just to make sure that all of the lots met zoning, I'm sure that Paul's taken a look at it. We also have filings in front of the Conservation Commission for these three lots. These wetlands have to do with the pond here. And then there's some wetlands along a little intermittent stream that runs through here and then out to, out Legacy. And forget the name of the street over here, right now. But anyway, out to this, into the drainage in that street there.
Lancelot.
Lancelot, yes, thank you. And that's it. So it's S two zoning. Every lot has at least 125 feet of frontage. Every lot's at least 15,000 square feet. And Lot five, which has wetlands, has 18,432 square feet, which is more than the 90% requirement, which would be 13,500. And then the house will remain, on this, will be on what we called Lot two A, because it was Lot two when we subdivided here. So that's 26,786 square feet. Plenty of frontage, rear setback, we're meeting it by about four inches, or a little bit more, about four inches here. Side setback and front setback, no problem. That's existing lot lines, so.
Just before you get to you, Joe, Paul, anything on this? You've reviewed this?
I've reviewed the A&R plan and meets the requirements in zoning bylaw. All the lots have the required amount of frontage in the area.
Good. Joe, question?
I'm just curious, what's that parcel there?
No, there's an existing single-family house on that lot.
That's on the corner there.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is an unchecked lot, is there any problem with this, other than when it comes time to put a house up with the, maybe that's, I'm going beyond where we need to be today, but would that be, where would the house go if you had to put it there?
No, well, we've already laid it out. I do have those plans with me, I believe. But the house is right here, you know, setback 30 feet from the street.
So that carries through, the land carries through?
Yeah, the land, this is, you know, this is the way it carries all the way through. So it's set 20 feet from here and 35 feet back, 30 feet back from the street, so.
And you'd have, you'd be able to do that, okay. And it would meet the setbacks?
Yes, it'd meet all the zones.
All right, thanks.
Okay, just gonna let Al catch up here, catch his breath for a second. We approve the minutes without you, Al, I'm sorry.
It's a good trick, you pull these blinds like this, I pull it from across the street. I said, the light's on. I said, oh my God, I said, they must be down at the fire station.
Oh, no, really? Oh geez.
Sorry about that.
Okay, no problem. So we just started the second agenda item. John has brought in a A&R plan, it was in your packet. It was, you probably remember, it was Abe Shigori's old property up by St. Tim's. They want to divide, a good, nice piece of property, they want to divide it. Lots on Nichols and on Brook.
Yep.
And Debbie, did you have any questions?
I did. Do we know why we got the zigzaggy? Is that just something that, are we zigzagging because of the wetlands, or because...
Well, that's probably the property line.
That's just the existing property line. I can't really tell you why the line goes that way.
When they did Lancelot Court, they needed, they needed area for those houses that came in on this side, and they just cut it pieces.
Sold them off, those pieces?
Correct.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm not saying that we didn't survey this, we did, but essentially we're looking at a plan that Johnny Anderson did, I think, back in the eighties, that, you know, showed this, showed this whole piece for...
Joe?
And these just existing houses there, right now?
Those are existing houses on Lancelot Court, that, you know, Lancelot Court is a little dead-end street here. This line is actually the town's water main easement, so the water main comes essentially up Nickel Street and then goes across here and then actually back down and somehow under the sluice way there, right, of Hawes Brook, and then connects to Garden Parkway, right? So that's the limping system for the waters, the water on this part of Norwood. So that's what this is, and we're not doing anything with that, but you can see it's on the property a little bit here and a little bit there. And again, that shows on a lot of record plans, and that's the location of it, is on all of these record plans.
You all set?
All set.
Mrs. Homewood, you all set?
Now, how far down, where do we hit Walpole? Way down?
The bridge.
Yeah, it's probably another five, 500 feet or so.
Okay, so ever, all of this is in Norwood?
Yeah, it's on Norwood.
Mr. Glossa, Lot five. Is that going to be a buildable lot?
Yes.
Where you gonna put a house at? It's gonna go through all the way.
30 feet back, right, 20 feet from the sideline. The lot has to be at least 125 feet wide. I do have, I might have him with me.
I think he ran, before you got here, Al, I think you said you ran it by Mark, and Mark was okay with it.
Yeah, we've already sort of run this by the officials. 125 feet.
Right, right, well, that's 190.
And there's also lot width, right? So in Norwood, you have to have the 125 feet all the way back through your building. Now, I'm gonna probably embarrass myself, because I probably don't have the plans, but I may.
All the way from point to point, it's close to 200 feet, Debbie.
I'm not saying frontage, I'm saying side. If you put the house here, what's the sides?
Twenty. But as long as it runs through the house, John, he's, he's good with that? Okay. So you just need to move the house closer to Brook Street?
Yeah, we were able to, yeah, 30 feet back from Brook Street.
Okay.
I actually don't have the plans with me.
I don't think that would affect this board's decision to break up.
No, curiosity.
Curiosity, yeah, I think everybody looked at that and said, you know, where are you gonna put the house?
I'm sorry.
I asked that because I knew you would have asked that, and I knew you probably were down the fire station, so I said, I'll ask it, because Al's right.
And I didn't want to bring them up here.
We're good with that.
I mean, not to put any responsibility for this with Mark Schubert, but I did show him the plan with the buildings, the size of the houses, the width at the backs of the houses, which has to be at least 125 feet and all the way through. And he agreed that, you know, at least what he saw that I drew was...
Thank you.
Rob, anything?
I don't have any questions.
Brian, anything? What's happening here?
No.
Everything meets zoning, everything falls into place. If there's no other questions from the board, I'll entertain a motion to approve the A&R plan.
Check in.
Anything else on the motion? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Seven oh five, we have a continued public hearing for site plan approval, McDonald's on Broadway. James Cranston from Bowler, James is here, right, there's James. And again, I'm so awful with names, our beautiful representative, Christina from McDonald's is here. So since we last met, McDonald's and Paul have had many communications. So Paul, if you kind of just want to fill in, fill the board in, now again, we're talking about the site plan approval here.
So I had a conference call with Mr. Cranston and Christina and David DeLuca and counsel representing McDonald's, William Squire. And we had a discussion about where the, where the application stands and what are the outstanding issues, and really didn't cover much by way of new ground, but, you know, we all are clear on where we were. And I told them that, based on the advice from counsel, when Dave DeLuca met with the board and we talked about site plan approvals in general, and our requirements, counsel advised the board that any conditions of approval or additional things that were being asked for by the planning board needed to kind of be looked in the context of being proportional with what the project is proposing to do. And based on that, and the information provided by Christina from McDonald's, we understood that the request to grind down the whole parking lot and repave it was a $100,000 request. After that, I understood that, you know, I got the sense that that was a big ask, and that was a lot of money, more than what had been budgeted for this project. And so as an alternative, I thought that a reasonable alternative would be to request that the parking lot, after the work had been done on it, just be seal-coated and restriped, and that that would give it a fresh new look. And what we understood, the cost estimate provided by Christina, was that was in the neighborhood of $10,000. And so I told them that, you know, I really don't think the planning board's gonna wanna force that the whole parking lot be ground down and completely repaved, but that, you know, I think the planning board thought that that was a reasonable request to ask to have it seal-coated after it's cut into in a couple of places and work being done. Subsequent to that conference call, we did get a call, and they did submit some revised plans last week. And what we understand, and Mr. Cranston will run, give a more detailed rundown, is that they've added some curbing here on this, this part of the site where they're removing a freezer, an old freezer, I think.
We're on C four, I think, right?
Yep, and that's on sheet C four. And then on sheet C seven, there's a landscaping sheet, and they have, they've done what Debbie had asked, and she had asked for some additional landscaping, and so in the areas that I've got highlighted here in green, they proposed some additional landscaping. So these revised plans came in on last Wednesday or Thursday, we looked at them, Pat did a brief memo to the board explaining pretty much what I just said. And so that's my understanding of what's changed since the last time the board met with, with the applicant. So at this point, I think I should, I should stop and turn it over to Mr. Cranston.
Yeah. If you are, Mr. Cranston, why don't you just kind of take it from where Paul, and explain, you know, what's changed, what, you know, what the finished product in your, in your eyes was gonna look like?
Absolutely. So Paul did a great job summarizing where we, where we are to date. So the area in the back where that freezer and the shed was, that curbing has now been extended, so it's now like a more of a complete site versus kind of this area being forgotten about. I know that there was some concern about this not being, having plantings on it, so this is an area where we've added some plantings on the McDonald's property itself, no plantings within the railroad property, which would be this finger here. The second location where we've added additional plantings is where the pylon sign is. You go out there now, it looks like that area was not to, you know, use the same term, but kind of forgotten about. There was no real dressing at the bottom of the sign, so we felt that that was a great spot to add some supplemental landscaping over in this corner. It's got good visibility from the road, and it would work well with the sign. And then the third area was actually over here. You may remember, this was the landscaping we added before our last meeting, so this was always here. At the last meeting, that was a new add, but this is the third area where we'd added some additional landscaping. We didn't feel that adding any plantings in here would be beneficial, they would get trampled with snow, that's where the plows are gonna end up putting some snow there. And the landscaping, the total add now of all the landscaping is about like $10,000, above and beyond what was originally anticipated. So that coupled with, you know, removing the shed, fixing the trash enclosure, you know, we're fixing the cash basin, we're seal coating the lot, all of that is like $45,000 add versus when we first made our submission to the board. So that's where we are today. We're hopeful that you find this hopefully final plan acceptable, but that really is the summary of the changes that we've made since the last appearance before the board.
Okay, great. What I'm gonna do is just, we'll go around and, let's, because we'll, we'll take this in a couple of steps then. Are there any questions on landscaping? Let's, let's handle this right out of the gate. We'll start, Mr. Sheehan.
The grating up at the very top, is that existing? Is that, that is, it's actually on the railroad property?
Yeah, those are, remember, there were like some shrubs that were overhanging that we were asked to prune, that's, that vegetation, that's the thing, if you looked at it from the sky.
Okay. All right. I'm glad to see the upgrades from last time.
Thank you. Mrs. Homewood?
So are the corner ones, they were there before, right? But not this one on the right or left, whichever one.
So the trees, the trees we had added after we went to zoning board. So the trees were our first filing with, with your board. I know that you were at the zoning board meeting and you had, you know, raised concerns about the amount of parking, so we, we added these areas here where we got rid of some parking and added grass and three trees. So that was the first filing with the board. The second filing with the board, we added this landscaping here, a couple clusters, that was the 16 shrub add that we did. Now this is our third upgrade to the landscaping, where we've added signage landscaping where the shed was, and then over here.
And you are seal coating, is that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Al?
No comment.
All right, Rod?
I think it's improved. Glad to hear the seal coating is happening. It's about, it's all good.
Brian, anything? Any questions or thoughts that you have that maybe we haven't come up with yet, or...
No, I was just curious about the trees in the corners, that this, is there any details as to what the initial plantings are like, is that, just in the corners of the property?
Oh, here we go. So two of them are honey locusts, and one is a pear tree.
That's it. Perfect. All right, thank you.
I just have one question, and, all right, so, and I appreciate what you've done on the landscaping, I, I like it.
Not just me, it was...
Well, when I say you, I mean, I really mean Christina, okay? You're the hired help, okay? It's really the, I like, I appreciate the increase in it.
Could've just paved it for the money they're spending with all these others. Net zero.
But these are, these are requests from the board that we're trying to meet all of the others.
In addition to, post-game after.
So that's, so any other questions or comments on the landscaping plan as it stands right now?
No.
And then we'll move on. Okay, was there any other, we, the seal coating, but were there any other plans to the change on C four was landscaping, right? No, C four was the, the general plan. Were there any other changes to the layout or parking that, from what we've already discussed, so that...
I will note, though, that the plans don't specifically call out for the seal coat, but it would be a condition that you roll into the project.
And restriping.
Restriping is on the plan. What's shown here with all the pavement markings is what the property will look like at the end of the day.
So, just so I'm clear and the board's clear, the major changes here are the additional landscaping.
Yes.
And the addition of seal coating and striping.
For this, for this meeting, in addition to the changes we...
Yes, above and beyond what was already on the initial plan.
Yeah, we actually clouded, we clouded the changes on this submission, so we didn't cloud it as a listing.
So, but there's no other changes to drainage or anything else, so that we have to worry about lighting or anything?
Does clouded mean that? Is that what clouded means, the little, the little thing?
It's just curiosity, because I've gone by it a few times, and where's on the, the parking lot to the left? Is there a light pole in there, in the middle, in somewhere in the back of...
Not in the middle, I know there's one back here.
Back here.
Yep. There's a double-headed fixture over here.
And does that, and that give you enough light for that parking lot? You're not, you're not asking to add any light poles?
We're not adding any, any lights, from what I understand, I've spoken to the manager over there, that it was well lit, I think in the beginning of the process, there was an issue, but it was because one of the light fixture bulbs had blown out, so those have since replaced, yeah.
Joe?
I think there's, is that a second light toward the, toward the middle of the back, right at the very, yeah. Yeah, so you got two back there. Okay.
All right. Al?
Mr. Chairman, clarify for me the seal coating, that's gonna be the whole?
Yes, sir.
Not just that left side?
And it's not concrete.
Yeah.
And the freezer has been deleted from the thing?
Yes, that, this plan is what the store will look like at the end, so the plan, the freezer is where the little, where his finger is, so that will be gone, and we'll replace that with plantings.
With what?
Plantings.
Okay, so the, so the outside freezer will be gone?
Yes.
Must be all those fresh beef quarterpox.
Moving it inside?
We had one late evening, they're delicious.
Is that the one that doesn't have meat in it?
What? No.
Oh, please. Is that the, oh, I thought everybody's coming out with one of those now, I don't know. I hope you don't.
I wouldn't try one.
I don't look like I'm about to try one, very, okay. All right, so...
You'd be the last man.
I would be the last man, I would be. All right, so Paul, I'm gonna ask you, so we've gone over as far as site plan review, is there anything we need to cover before we take a vote?
You know, I think that we've had, we've had quite a bit of discussion about the site plan, and through the, the plan review process, and back and forth with, with the engineer and with Christina, we identified some issues, and they've now responded to those issues that we've identified. Some, some stuff like an old cooler that wasn't being used is now getting removed, and we're getting some plantings there, so at this point, I think that we've got a better project than, than what was originally submitted. We've asked the applicant to, to go a little bit above and beyond what had originally been proposed, and it took a little bit of tug and war back and forth, but, but I think we've arrived at what is a good compromised plan. So at this point, I'm gonna recommend that the board take a vote to approve the site plan with the revisions shown, and...
The conditions.
A condition of approval that...
Seal coat and striping.
Seal coat the parking lot, and the whole, entire parking lot.
Striping is on it, yeah. Okay. Did you have a comment, Joe?
No, you're looking for a motion.
Just one, on this is a simple majority?
Yep, so this is a simple majority vote.
Can I?
Yes, Mrs. Homewood.
Just, I appreciate that we've gone back and forth, I have the ideas, and then, or we have the ideas, and then Paul's gotta implement that and go back, so thank you, Paul. And again, we just, I know everybody's heard of this, like, all the warming term and trying to get some more green space going, and that's kind of what we're looking for, just make it look a little nicer, so, for what we got, thank you.
So this was a, a public hearing, so I, I am gonna ask if there are anyone in the public that would like to speak on this project. If not, I don't see anyone that wants to, so I will first entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
No, a second, but close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous, five to zero, to close the public hearing. Now on a, a motion on the project.
Make a motion that we approve with conditions, one would be seal coating, all the asphalted area, and the second would be striping. The striping, I think, has been laid out on the plan any before, so those are the two conditions.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, quick question. On this motion that we're talking about now, does that include the lighting?
No.
Okay.
No, lighting, we've already voted on.
Oh, okay.
That was the, and before we go, just, it was, I will admit, it was, having both hearings was good for the applicant, because they only have to come here once, but it does, one starts waving into the other, and I think initially that's what happens, we start talking about lighting, we start talking about, so the internally lit light vote has already been taken, so we're just talking about site plan review here on the motion. So I'm looking for a second.
Second.
I'll have a, anything else on the motion? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. Then all those in favor of approval, site plan review, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, one aye, four, passes four to one. Thank you, McDonald's. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Got it, you all right?
I hope to see you all at the grand reopening, it will look beautiful, I promise.
What's your schedule?
I think we're gonna probably start sometime in the spring, maybe late, late April, early May, as long as it's not snowing in May, we'll see.
Thank you all.
Happy holidays, happy new year.
No, we've got a second.
Paul wants us to look at it.
It's 7:30, hey, we're almost on time. Special permit decision review, denial of internally illuminated signage in the central business district, McDonald's. Oh, probably a month ago, maybe longer, when we first, when they first came in, they had an application for an internally lit sign, which is, they wanted the yellow M. It was, we needed a super majority, it was voted down, three to two, two opposed, which denied, denied it, so, but this is, Paul has to write a decision on that, and I think what, you want to go over the decision, you're...
So the, a draft copy of the special permit denial is in your packet, it's dated November fourth.
Yeah.
And I drafted a decision, I sent it to Dave DeLuca, he gave me some, some advice to add some additional information, and, and I did that, and before I signed this and sent it, recorded it with the clerk and sent it to the applicant, I wanted to make sure that the planning board was satisfied with the decision. And so I was hoping that the board would take a vote to approve this decision as drafted. If anybody found any typos or thinks anything needs to be corrected or rewritten or added, now is the opportunity to do that, and I can add anything that needs to be added and then finalize it. The, since this took place in October, we have 90 days from the close of the public hearing to render this decision, so that was gonna be coming up in January, and so I wanted to just wrap this up before the end of the year.
Does anybody have any idea about maybe reconsidering this vote?
Well, that reconsideration could happen, it has to happen at the end of the meeting, I believe, and I, the only people who could ask for reconsideration would be either yourself or Debbie. or Debbie, the, I don't, I think that's the only way, I think the only, in the, in the, the people voted in the negative, not the affirmative, can ask for reconsideration.
According to, you know, parliamentary procedures, Robert's Rules of Order, yes, that is correct, however, to, to add to that, as many of you know, that in Massachusetts, if a special permit application is denied, it, it slams the window shut for a reapplication for a period of two years. The only way somebody could reapply within that two-year period would be for them to come back to the planning board and, I'm drawing a blank on the technical term, the plan would have to be resubmitted, reconsidered by the board, and in order for the board to entertain a reconsideration of a denial, the board would have to make a finding that the new, that the project had substantially changed, and if a project has substantially changed, then someone can, can request that the planning board allow a reapplication and the board can then vote on it. If the board then voted based on the fact that the, a substantial change to the project had been made, then we would have to, the applicant would have to reapply, we'd have to re-advertise and re-hold a public hearing. So when a special permit is denied, it, it really screws the lid on to these things hard, so that there really has to be unusual circumstances and a substantial change to a project before it could come back within that two-year timeframe.
When you say substantial change to the project, we probably could say that there were some substantial changes, but not specifically with regard to the lighting, would that, that would make a difference, I would...
Yeah, it would have to be a lighting related, they, they applied for an internally illuminated sign, and it'd have to be a substantial change found by the board to, to the proposed internally illuminated signs or the signage being proposed.
Okay.
So, it's not a quick...
A change of heart is not a, is not a...
It's not the way the state law works, and, and it really is pretty, pretty strict on that.
One thing that, that when Dave DeLuca was here, and I was really glad he came in, because he, he really hit home a couple of things to me, and, and when we look at these, and any application, be it McDonald's or Joe's Dry Cleaner, is to really look at the criteria and, and form our opinions against criteria, and, and he really hit it home, he says, "You can deny or approve anything," he says, "but you have to draw a direct line, a straight line from your, your decision to a specific criteria, and it can't be a wavy line, it can't be a roundabout way, or it can't be, it's got to be a straight line, so if any judge or any attorney or whoever looks at these things in land court or superior court or wherever it goes, can, can, can follow that line and, and see where you're going with it." So, I guess to answer your question about reconsideration, Al, the answer would be at this point, no.
It, it would be a long process, it's not just a, I'd like to change, reconsider and...
Okay.
And this is the appeal as it sits, right, what you put in your package?
That's a special permit denial.
Now, I have seen, now, I, I believe you, because, believe me, I don't know anything about this, I have seen a town meeting where we've had reconsiderations.
So there's a similar section of the law that talks about zoning changes, and if you try to change the zoning bylaw and it gets denied, you got to wait two years before you re-submit that.
Yeah, maybe on the town meeting there were, there was other issues, maybe it was money issues or something where they could reconsider it at the end of town meeting, they could, there's probably a whole, it's probably a whole separate section of chapter forty.
So the, the section of law, it just came to me, it's called repetitive petition.
Yeah.
So in order to, to, for, they would have to file for repetitive petition, planning board would first have to make a finding that there was a substantial change to the project and escape the, the internal sign. That was then, a substantial change was acknowledged and, and recognized by the planning board, and the fault was to go back, then we'd restart, the applicant would then have to, this would be driven by them, have to reapply, and then we'd have to hold advertising.
So if they came in with a, a plan with substantial change and we deemed it substantial change, we, then we could handle it like a new application?
Yeah, now, I, I don't know the exact date in January when this, this has to be submitted. If the board wanted to table this for tonight and talk to DeLuca, Town Council, about how that could be done, to verify what I've told you or whatever, you could do that.
Well, before we go to that degree, Al, was your intention to ask for a reconsideration on that?
Most definitely was.
Okay, so that, so there is a, there is a appetite for it, then. Would the board be okay with tabling the discussion on this until Paul could talk to Dave DeLuca and, and find out exactly what our course of action could be?
I'd be for that.
I'd be for that.
I'd be for it.
Debbie?
Yeah, I, they're, they're going to appeal it, and it's, I would like them to put the M's on it, you know, backlit with some regular lights instead of internally lit, I, I'm not...
Well, I'm not asking you to vote on, on reconsideration tonight.
No, I understand that, no, I understand that.
Right now is, is that, Al would, you know, would like to possibly bring it up for reconsideration, so table our discussion on this until we can get some legal counsel on, on what our course of action is, and then we'll have a vote, and then anyone can vote any way they want at that point.
Actually, as, as, as we're talking, there's another, another scenario, I, I mentioned the deadline, so if, if a special permit decision is not issued within ninety days of the close of the public hearing, it's approved by default, so no action at all.
Gives it an unapproval.
Yeah, and I believe we didn't have any real, you know, there wasn't something glaring about those internally illuminated signs that we asked them to change, so that's another scenario, but I can, I can, if you want to just table this for tonight, we can, we can ask attorney...
You opened up another can of worms here, so, say you filed this, we looked at it tonight and you filed this before the deadline, so it's, it's, now it's filed, they have an appeal period, but in the meantime, for some reason, somehow, there's a way to do reconsideration, and it's already been filed, could the reconsideration still, we just, uh...
Probably just have to wait to twenty days, right?
We would, let's talk to Dave DeLuca and play out the scenarios.
Yeah, I, because I think there's a scenario in there that, that if the, the denial was filed and, and then recorded and made official, the applicant could appeal it, and through counsel, it could be resolved through an appeal.
By, by not, by not filing it, though, it really doesn't give the board members, as Bill used to say, a second bite of the apple, so Mrs. Homewood's concerns wouldn't be reheard, you're basically saying, yeah, we're going to let it go, without, the reconsideration would be discussing it again and taking another vote, and, you know, by just letting it lapse, the board doesn't get a chance to, to...
Right, and maybe, maybe after they think of all this, maybe they'll do something different, maybe they'll put the M's up and light it from behind, like we're trying to do kind of across in this...
Well, we're not asking them at this point to, to bring in another plan.
I understand that, I understand that.
We're asking to reconsider on the, on the plan that we go to.
I understand that, but since they've been denied, maybe, maybe they're, you know, they've got their site plan, everything, everybody's happy, maybe they'll say, "I don't want to spend lawyer money," and we'll just light it from behind because it's in the business district, maybe.
Well, let's, I think that the consensus is that we'll, we'll hold off and we'll let Paul talk to Dave DeLuca and find out where we're at, what our options are, and then we can decide what we want to do.
Okay.
That way we'll have, you know, right now we're spitballing this thing and, and we'll, we'll find out exactly, yes, you can do this, no, you can't, this is what has to happen, this is what has to happen, so that...
And it wasn't just, you know, we'll do more landscaping and then I'll give, I, I...
This is the confusion.
Got it.
Landscaping and lighting, two, I mean, two separate...
It's two different things, and I still think central business, business, we've worked out...
We're not going to, we're not going to, we're going to wait.
Got it.
We're not going to have that discussion tonight, we're going to wait until, because this all may be for moot, if, if, if Dave DeLuca says you can't do anything, then, then the decision's been filed, will be filed.
Okay.
That, my friends...
Leads us to...
Brings us to our update.
Paul's memorandum.
Paul's memorandum, which was extensive and informative, and I know that we want to get out of here tonight, because...
It's a hurry.
We have a engagement.
Oh.
But, Paul, it was, it was a lot going on, because I will say I was not surprised when I read about Forbes Hill, that seems to, I know it's out of this board's hands, but it has seemed to take on a life of its own. But anything you, any highlights you would just want to touch that, that we need to address or possibly address?
So one, one new, new business item is the board did receive a, a site plan for property on the Ponset Street, 429 to Ponset Street, and the applicant is proposing to construct some apartments, fifteen new townhouse-style apartments on the site. For members of the board that have been around for a while, apparently several years ago, this was already an approved project, and it's my understanding that some foundations were constructed and one unit was built, but the remaining units on the remaining foundations never got finished, and those permits that were issued had lapsed and...
This is behind the Hoppin' Bad, right?
Yeah.
Whoa, landmarks!
Take your head, you'll say yes.
You'll say yes.
The what?
The Hoppin' Bad.
The Hoppin' Bad?
The Hoppin', yeah.
Kids pay, they'll wait. Oh! My little, three little girls used to get out of there for buck seventy-five.
The Ground Round, then it became the Ground Round.
The Ground Round, okay.
It was an Irish bar for years, okay, so anyway.
So, so the permits have lapsed and the applicant is, I think the project is, the property is under agreement, and the new prospective owner has resubmitted plans to the zoning board and the conservation commission, and so they're, they're now submitted the site plans to the planning board.
I think that Joe and Al will remember, I believe this is Robishaw property.
Yeah.
Yeah, but were, they were, when they came before us before, those foundations were
sitting there for years, filling up with water, weren't they taking them up, I, I...
I think that they've been removed or they're going to be removed, the, the old foundations until...
That was a couple of years ago, right?
Cannot be used.
This was a long time ago.
Well, that they came back and said they were going to get rid of the foundation.
That long?
Yeah, the, the daughter was, I think, was the spokesperson for the Robishaws at the time, yeah.
So that, that'll be coming up at our next meeting, we've got that scheduled, and we'll, we'll begin to review those plans. I went to the State Economic Assistance Coordinating Council meeting last week in Worcester, and they did vote to approve the TIF for Moderna.
Did you see the press release on that, Paul, for Moderna? They're going to bring two hundred and fifty people from Cambridge to here.
Yep, when, when they've completed the move into the old UTI building, it'll bring the head count in Norwood to five hundred and ninety employees working for Moderna, and that'll be a, you know, a broad range of types of jobs, but overall, they'll be paying better than our last applicant.
They'll probably be our first or second largest employer.
I detect a notice...
I think the hospital is, right now, hospital is number one largest employer, and this will be right up there.
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to nail down a clear list of that, and the listing that the state has of the top ten employers in this town are not, is not correct, and we're trying to quantify what those companies, which ones they are and how many they have. Does the board have any questions about anything else listed in my status report?
Oh, we can't about anything that's not...
Joe, Joe, go ahead, Joe, you're closer.
Section improvements, at the end of Prospect Street, is, I know that they were talking about this with the state, and it takes a long time, and I don't know if it's, is that something supposed to be done in like 2021, or, I mean, I know it's a, it was a long way out, is that the right time or is it before that?
So, this is the intersection at the, at the Buene and, and the road, Planning Field Road that leads up to where One Upland and Moderna are located. When Polroyd closed and the land was pretty much split in half, over a hundred acres of land owned by Polroyd with several buildings, Campanelli Company bought the, facing the hill, the left side, and another holding company in New York City owns the fifty acres on the right side where Mercer is, is located. Because of the size and the scope of the development that Campanelli was proposing, they had to submit an environmental notification form, an environmental, I wasn't here at the time, so I, I don't know whether they had to go through the full environmental impact report process, but they, they did have to file their plans with the state, and those project description included an extent of development that triggered the need for a traffic study. When the state looked at that, they issued approval of the environmental impact report, that whole environmental notification process, but they issued to Campanelli an order that's called a Section 61 finding, and in that, that Section 61 finding, they required Campanelli to do annual traffic counts at the bottom of that road at that intersection, and to submit the traffic counts to the state and to the town, and so every fall, October, November, the town engineer, Mark Ryan, received a copy of the, the traffic study and, and the planning department received it. The Section 61 finding said, you got to do the traffic counts every year, and when you reach a certain number of trips, you then have to start to design a signal for that intersection and, and signalize it. So, we had been monitoring this annually, and after Moderna completely moved in and One Upland, the apartment complex, was completely leased out, it, that happened first, and it didn't trigger the requirement to signalize the intersection, then Moderna started to move in the building, and when Moderna moved in completely and exceeded the number of employees that they committed to the town, it triggered, now it's time to do, put in a traffic signal. That happened over a year ago, and Campanelli didn't do anything.
They sold, they sold on it.
Right, can I ask a quick question, because Campanelli was, was the one that was supposed to be doing the count?
Yes.
And now Moderna is upping the count, so are they, get them thrown in the mix too?
So, it's, it's my understanding, so Campanelli owned the, the first building that Moderna's in now.
Oh, okay.
They owned the building and they were the landlord to Moderna.
Okay, all right.
Subsequent to that, that building and the vacant lot next door, a fifteen-acre lot next to where Moderna is now, was purchased by a company called Alexandria, and Alexandria is a big real estate company that specializes in campuses for life science companies, biotech companies. So now there's a new landowner there, Campanelli sold the Moderna building and property and the lot next to it that Moderna has, had, has a lease with Campanelli.
But it follows, right, does it follow the property?
So, Dan DiMarco from Campanelli explains that he had created an association, a business park association, and Moderna is a member of that business park, and so was UTI, they were members, and One Upland was sold to Jefferson Apartments, and there are three members to this business association, and Campanelli had these companies paying for the cost of maintaining the road, so Campanelli sold, sold the two properties, they no longer own any real estate up there except for the road, so now that, now they're, the only thing they own is a road, and they've got agreements which we never saw, but they created an association, like a homeowners association, to pay for the cost of maintaining the road, so Campanelli doesn't have to pay any out-of-pocket costs, they've apparently, from what we understand, passed those costs on. When they set up, and this is what, what Dan DiMarco explained, is that, that... is that when each of these properties changed hands, that it was made clear to them that, at some point in time, there was gonna need to be a signal installed at the end of the road, and that they would each contribute a certain share towards that cost, and that Campanelli wouldn't be bearing the whole cost. And I don't know to what extent they would be bearing any cost, because these, these private, the private Business Park Association, those documents, you know, were never submitted here. They're private agreements between those big players, and we are not privy to what the terms of those agreements are. We notified Mr. DeMarco that he should be paying for the design of the signals, and then, you know, let's get on with signalizing the intersection. And during this timeframe, I had received complaints from my contact at Moderna that the employees were very uncomfortable and didn't feel safe pulling out onto that, that road without any traffic signal, which is why they have police details there directing the traffic.
Every day.
The police refused to direct the traffic in, when daylight savings time kicks in, because they're out there in the dark, and people drive that straight section of road at fifty or sixty miles an hour. And two or three of the detail officers reported almost being hit. And the police officers, the details are, are optional. It's free, it's overtime work for them, and none of them would, would do this job at night anymore. So, we have concerns and complaints coming from the big employer, from Moderna. Their employees don't feel safe pulling onto the road, and the police are saying, you know, "We'll do the traffic details to help direct traffic coming and going when it's light out, but come, come November, we're done." And that's where we are today.
And there's debris all over the road at that exit.
How they got around that, because they put the light in at the next...
Mercer.
Mercer. And there was always a detail there, but they had a spotlight. They had, they, they lit up, they had a utility pole there, and they lit up that...
Intersection.
That intersection, and, and the police officer was clearly visible, and, and usually had a squad car with a, a light going or something.
It was actually a planning board condition of approval for Mercer, which said, which addressed all of these issues at that intersection. So, the next intersection down Prospect Street, that's an intersection that was identified by the state as, as a high crash rate. One of the highest crash rates in the region.
The Commonwealth.
In, in the state. And...
Sounds better with Commonwealth.
The intersection is on the Transportation Improvement Plan list, the tip list, to be redesigned and signalized. And that's on the tip list, I think, for 2021, for the work to be completed. There was a commitment made by, so that, that intersection's being designed, and it's not at a hundred percent design. Mark Ryan had asked Campanelli, Dan DeMarco, for a donation to complete the design of that intersection, and the donation in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to, to pay for the engineers to complete this design. And originally, Campanelli had agreed to that. And in a meeting with John Carroll, and, and Dan DeMarco, myself, and Mark Ryan, Dan DeMarco agreed to that, that fifty thousand donation, with the understanding that when the additional land up on the hill is, is eventually being developed, that we would not go back to Campanelli and again ask for any kind of off-site mitigation, 'cause they're making a fifty thousand dollar contribution to pay for the design of the signalization of the intersection. And Campanelli had already agreed to, and I don't know what the exact amount, but a substantial sum of money for off-site mitigation for that intersection had already been paid for by Campanelli. So the fifty thousand was another donation on top of, like, a hundred thousand that they had already contributed.
True.
So we went back to, we went back and said, "Okay, now," Mark Ryan said, "We need the fifty thousand to finish the design work." And Dan DeMarco said, "Well, I don't own that, those, those pieces of property that I was talking about before, where you wouldn't come back and ask for mitigation, so I, I, I'm not gonna give you the fifty thousand." He said, "But we will help you, and we will approach the other businesses in the park, and we'll ask them to make the contribution." So, he did help us, and he introduced us to the principals at Alexandria, who owned the first Moderna building and the lot next door. And it took some time, but fifty thousand dollar check came today. And that's gonna be passed on to Mr. Ryan, and that'll be used to help pay for the signalization of...
Jefferson Homes, only yet?
Um, no. This was Alexandria made the donation. They own the Moderna building and the, and the lot next door. So, so that takes care of that. But then we get back to, well, what about the intersection that Campanelli was supposed to have already started the design, 'cause it triggered the requirements of that Sixty, Sixty-One finding a year ago, and they haven't started the design. And so Mark Ryan and I had a meeting with them. Again, we've met several times, so we had another meeting in, like, October, and he says, you know, "I went to these other companies that are part of the, the, the Business Park Association, and they said, you know, well, they didn't feel like they had to pay any money." Alexandria said, "We feel that we should contribute, but we're not gonna pay all of the, it's, it's over a million dollars to signalize this intersection, a million and a quarter."
Are we talking about Prospect?
No.
Or are we talking about the bottom of the hill?
Well, I'm talking about the bottom of the hill.
It's a million bucks, didn't it?
It, it's very, very expensive.
Yeah, so what are we, fifty thousand now?
Because you got into connection of all the intersections.
Yeah.
So you're not stopping seven times, you gotta run them.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, I don't think...
Chappell Tree Street costs that much.
There's a project area, all right? And the project area for the Prospect Street intersection overlaps with the project area for the bottom of Planting Field Road and, and One A. Mark Ryan suggested to Campanelli that, "Why don't we, we do a public-private partnership? And since these two projects overlap, we use the same engineer, and they do the whole thing." It's a, it's a very well-known engineering firm. It does a lot of business and design work, VHB.
Oh.
Dan DeMarco, after, got back to us and said, "You know, we're really not interested in doing any public partnership." The state sent a letter to Mark Ryan saying, "After we finish doing that Prospect Street intersection, there will be no one cutting into that brand-new pavement for five years." And so we got overlapping projects, and they're saying, "You're not gonna cut it to this for five years, so you better get going on that other intersection at the bottom of Planting Fields Road and One A."
Not, not to keep this going, 'cause I know we wanna get going. One A's a county road.
It's a state road.
State road, but that's town, it's, it's still...
No, the state owns the road. So, so DeMarco's like, "Well, you know, the other companies don't wanna pay for it. This one company that owns two big lots says they'll, they'll pay a portion, they feel like obligated, but they're not gonna pay all of it. Jefferson Apartments just basically said, you know, "We're all set. We don't need to do anything."
Who is, who's Moderna renting from? Jefferson or DeMarco?
So, Moderna has two landlords. One is Alexandria.
Okay.
And the other is a company called BR something, and they...
They're not ponying up.
They own the IT...
They own the UTI building. And they're the ones that said, you know, "We don't feel like we should have to contribute."
But they're getting rent.
And apparently, both of them pointed to Forbes Hill and said, "Well, all the new traffic's gonna come from the, this project that the town's trying to build here at Forbes Hill. Why doesn't the town pay for the new intersection?" So, after that meeting, Mark Ryan and I were not happy with Mr. DeMarco, and we made that clear that we weren't happy, that, you know, there were commitments, there were, there's a Section 61 finding from the state, which is basically an order for you to do this, and you sat on your hands for a year and haven't done anything yet. So, Mark Ryan contacted the, the people that wrote the Section 61 finding at, at the state. And Mark and I both reviewed the document again, and it's very clear that not only is Campanelli supposed to pay for signalizing the intersection, but they're supposed to pay for any traffic details up until then.
But they, they signed it.
Moderna has been paying for the traffic details for their employees.
Really?
So, we are at a point where the state indicated that, that there's gonna be a, a letter from one of the state's attorneys to Campanelli, telling them that they are required to signalize the intersection, and, you know, the state doesn't really care what other agreements he had with other people that wanna welch on their deals, that he's supposed to signalize that intersection. So, we're working with the state to compel Campanelli to live up to what he had agreed to and what he's required to do. And we are also gonna be meeting with town council, and the town might initiate some kind of action to persuade Campanelli to do their work. So, sorry, that was a long...
Should we continue this?
Long answer to your question, Joe, but that's...
Any other...
Meanwhile, we can't get back from Roach Brothers. But that's a whole nother story.
Mr. Chairman, can I, may I throw out one, just one question?
Fire away.
On the, all our friends at Yankee Spirits doing, and getting that underground work done, and I...
I haven't had any conversations with the owner recently. I, I need to talk to him about some other things. That building across from Yankee Spirits has been incomplete for over a year. That, that decision of the board to deny the drive-through has been appealed. We haven't heard anything.
So that's still in the appeal, that's still in the courts?
And, and apparently, the venue was Superior Court, and apparently, according to town council, land use cases are not fast-tracked in Superior Court. They go through land court quicker than they do in Superior Court.
And that would, that would not allow him to rent at all? Just, I mean, there's...
I think that freezes the whole, it's fire...
Well, he can, he can finish a building.
He can rent it, he just can't put a drive-through on it.
Yeah. He can finish the building and lease it out. It just can't operate a drive-through till that's resolved.
Wait, wait. Will you entertain a motion to end this evening's meeting, sir?
I would love to end this evening.
Make a motion that we close the meeting for this evening, sir?
So, second?
All those in favor? Before we go, we're not gonna...
Say Merry Christmas?
We're gonna say to our, our people that, you know, watch this...
Out in TV land?
Out in TV land. Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Kwanzaa, whatever you celebrate or don't celebrate. New Years, Happy New Years. We'll see you January sixth. Am I right?
Yes.
January sixth, we'll be back.
What do people do without their planning board meetings?
We will be back, and I'll, maybe I'll have a new sweater by then.